Let's just go ahead and call the meeting to order. It doesn't seem like anybody wants to use the open mic tonight, but we'll keep that for future sessions. It doesn't accumulate, by the way. It's still fifteen minutes. So if we could have the invocation by, from Joe Garkovich of the First Christian Church. Please rise.
Let us pray. God of creation, we thank you for another day of sunshine and a little bit of rain. As we gather tonight to do this important work, we pray blessings upon this group. We pray that they would act with wisdom, with courtesy, with reflection, and with impartiality. Amen.
... of the United States of America.
And thank you. Would you call the roll, please, Kathy?
Sure. Mayor Troutman?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Ekstrom?
Here.
Schumacher?
Here.
Weed?
Here.
Meisner?
Here.
Councilmember Gill and Shiraaki are abs- excuse, we have a quorum.
Okay, then I'm going to look for approval of the minutes for the May sixteenth and eighteenth, the special city council meeting of the sixteenth, and the general works committee meeting of the eighteenth. And at this time, are there any corrections? Mr. Meisner?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council. Regarding the minutes for the Monday, May sixteenth, meeting on the consent agenda, approval of the consent agenda, there should be a change there. I'm trying to find it. It basically shows that there's a majority, I mean, there's a unanimous vote, and that should say majority with myself voting as a nay.
For the consent agenda.
Duly noted.
Okay, we can note that. Are there any other corrections? Mr. Meisner, again.
Mr. Mayor and council. On the minutes for the May eighteenth committee meeting, under the facility energy audit, my only question is, the last sentence where it says, "Snowbarger," is that how you say his name? "Will continue working with city staff and proceed with other facilities." Does that in fact mean that the water treatment plant is excluded? Okay.
Yes. That's my understanding.
If that's the understanding, I'm good.
Is that, are those present? Okay. Are there any other corrections? Could I have a motion and a second? Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, make motion to approve the minutes of the May sixteenth regular city council meeting and the May eighteenth public works committee meeting as amended.
Second? Second, Ms. Schumacher. Second. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Are there any council member announcements at this time? Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. There is a general government committee meeting this Wednesday at four P.M. in the room adjoining this room.
Ms. Smith?
At that general government meeting, we'll be discussing the downtown development authority and the possibility of taking that to an election. And also tomorrow, also at City Hall, in that same room, just right over there, will be the strategy meeting for Citizens for Better Streets. That's one P.M. here at City Hall.
Councilmembers? Because I've got quite a bit to say. So, yes, Mr. Meisner?
I would like to make one minor announcement.
Minor? Go ahead.
Actually, pretty major.
Pretty major.
Through the diligent effort of this group, some committee volunteers, through, out of those probably ten or fifteen people in total involved, all of the city staff, the efforts of Mr. Ekstrom, we would like to welcome our newest addition, Tony O'Rourke.
Thank you very much.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Meisner. Are there anything else? You're the only one that didn't talk. Okay. Well, tomorrow, ten thirty, there's going to be a discussion on the abandoned homes and properties in Canyon City. We'll be here in, I assume, and is that, Ms. Bernath, is that here?
That's correct. It is. It's generally a staff meeting.
Oh, it's generally a staff meeting?
Yes.
I had it in my calendar.
Well, you've been helping out with that committee, so that's why we invited you, Preston.
Oh, thank you. Wow, all right. And we need to discuss at some point the vacancy in the planning commission. Do we want to do that here and now? Are we going to proceed on that? Kathy, would you inform us on that?
We have a vacancy created by Tony Martino, who has resigned from that position. Just want to go and make sure that you guys want us to go out and solicit through the newspaper and other venues, and then look at a possible meeting coming forward. And then with also that, we still have two vacancies on the Board of Adjustment. So can we go ahead and combine those two, and then come back in with interviews of those people interested?
When does Tony's term expire?
A term, oh, oh, yeah. I don't have that with me.
I think he's got about two more, two years.
I'm not sure. Eighteen.
He was filling a vacancy, wasn't he?
Oh, okay, so he's got quite a ways to go.
Eighteen months to two years.
Okay. And then on the Board of Adjustment, are those both alternates?
Those are both alternates.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good with combining them.
So we want to go for a month of advertising, and then come back with, see how many we have, how many takers we have, and go forward with that?
That's usually what we've done in the past.
Take it early July, or I'll be gone.
Mr. Havens?
I think the planning commission terms expire July first or thereabouts. Do we have any, any terms that are set to expire?
We're going to have two, at least, probably.
I think so. I did not bring the roster. I apologize.
Might want to add those if...
Oh, good idea. Okay. So we should enumerate the number of positions.
Okay, so then we'll go ahead and solicit those that's going to be expiring, to see if they're still interested, and move forward in that fashion.
It's agreeable? Okay, let's do that. Also, just something that I thought about, and I have to thank Jen, sitting in the audience here, that prompted me. Today's D-Day. And to the very few men who are alive and who fought on the beaches of France, and to the families who lost loved ones at that day, thank you. The United States of America will never and should never forget the sacrifices that were made that day, June sixth, nineteen forty-four. Thank you to our veterans for our freedom. So thank you all. Okay, we've covered that. We need to have an adoption of the consent agenda. Tony, do you have the consent agenda? Could you read that for us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Item four A relates to authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the fire district for the initial five-year term, but it can be continued thereafter. And the purpose is to install at a maximum thirty-foot height communications antenna and computer equipment on approximately two hundred and twenty-five square feet of property adjacent to the water tower on Storm Ridge in Dawson Ranch. There will be no monetary exchange, given that we are a member of that district. And the site is preferred because it has a line of sight to both two fire stations, one future station, and the regional communication center. So it's an ideal location for this facility. Item four B would authorize the mayor to enter an agreement with the Royal Gorge Railroad for fifteen hundred dollars to construct, maintain, and use a third railroad crossing at South Eleventh, and to get the railroad cars into their facilities at that point. It also would allow the city to withdraw its concerns to the Public Utilities Commission about this particular matter. Or C is a recommendation by the Public Works Committee to appoint Councilman Jim Meisner and city planner Terry Berthnot for the Public Arts Commission. And four D would formally validate the city council's action to compensate the acting city administrator, Kathy Robb, and to recognize the department directors during this transitionary period.
Again, there's a list of bills. Okay. Are there any additions or corrections at this time from any council member? Could I have a motion from council on the second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am?
I move that we adopt the agenda, consent agenda.
Second?
Second, Mr. Weed? Is there any discussion on the motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
At this point, we ask for the administrative report. Do you have enough, do you have a report yet, Tony, or...
Very short, it's the same.
Is it, oh, my God, or what?
Thank you for that recognition, but I'm thrilled to be here permanently. I think this is a great council, a great staff, and a great community, and I think there's tremendous opportunities here. Certainly, we have challenges, but they can be met with the collective efforts of this group and our staff, so I'm excited about that, particularly as it relates to the infrastructure needs and the roads of this community, economic development in the downtown, building the city's brand, leveraging the great recreational assets and lifestyle of this community, continuing with the fiscal stewardship of this council, and developing importantly, private, public, and not-for-profit partnerships to move the community forward. So with the council, I look forward to partnering with you and the staff to accomplish a lot of things in the near and long-term future.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Okay, are there any, were there any formal requests of citizens to speak to staff, to the council?
I've received one written request to speak to council. That's Lisa Himes with the Canyon City Chamber of Commerce. She wants to talk to council about entertainment in the park.
And you have five minutes, Ms. Himes.
Oh, my goodness.
I know.
That's a lifetime for me.
Oh, right.
First of all, I want to welcome Tony. We're really happy to have you here, Tony, and welcome to our community. We do love it. Thank you all for letting me speak. I do have one tiny little thing to pop in besides entertainment in the park. I just want to remind everyone that tomorrow starts our farmer's market, right here in Veterans Park, eight A.M. every Tuesday morning. It goes until one P.M. We're going to have an opportunity to get all sorts of fresh fruits and vegetables, all Colorado-grown. I want to invite everyone to take the opportunity to go down to the park, listen to a little bit of music, and pick up some great fruit and vegetables, and enjoy your morning. And we follow it up with entertainment in the park. This is our first entertainment in the park of the season. As always, it is being kicked off by the Southern Colorado Community Band. They're sponsored by Easy Medical, Wagner Brakes, and Cobble Bank or Fremont County Realty. So we want to thank our sponsors. We want to thank the city for their contribution in allowing us to put together entertainment in the park for the community. This year, entertainment in the park will be from six-thirty to eight-thirty P.M. We have a lot of dining opportunities there at the park, as well as we're inviting people to go to the restaurants in town, pick up a box dinner, bring it on down, lay a blanket down, and just enjoy the music and the event and what we have to offer. You know, there are so few communities that have everything that our community has to offer, and I just invite the people to take advantage of what we have. So thank you to the city very much for allowing this to happen, and we will make you proud.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Excuse me. I just wanted to reiterate what Lisa said, that entertainment in the park is starting earlier this year. So if you're used to getting there at seven, it starts at six-thirty now.
Good, thank you. Will it be longer then? Two hours? Is it two hours?
Same length.
Same length. Beautiful setting, downtown, down park and Veterans Park, Canyon City, at the band show. Thank you. There are no other, no other citizens' requests to speak, so let's move on to ordinance number nine, series two thousand and sixteen, an ordinance appointing the city's appointive officer, city administrator. Would you read by title, please?
This is the bill for ordinance number nine, series of two thousand and sixteen, an ordinance appointing the city administrator and establishing the compensation and benefits to be paid and otherwise provided.
Could I have a motion and a second from council? Mr. Mayor?
I move that we approve ordinance number nine, series of two thousand and sixteen, on its second reading.
Second?
And Mr. Weed? Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Okay, part eight A, a public hearing for zoning code amendment, transitional mixed-use overlay zone. I'm going to open a public hearing for that. Could we have a report from the city planner?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Council members, this is a public hearing for a zone code amendment to chapter seventeen point fourteen, which is the transitional mixed-use overlay zone. We are requesting to repeal and reenact that because of the numerous changes that we're suggesting to this particular part of the code. Public notice was published, as required by law. The planning commission took action on May fifteenth, uh, May seventeenth, excuse me. They conducted a public hearing on this and had been very active in the last almost two years in working on the transitional mixed-use overlay, looking for opportunities to revitalize underutilized properties. They approved it. There were no comments from the public in that meeting. There was no discussion, because they had been working on this for a very long time. Their findings of fact and recommendation to approve was passed unanimously by all those present. I'm going to go through and give you a brief overview. There were many changes to this. If you have some questions afterward, I would be happy to answer them. The code amendment is to enhance the purposes of the overlay zone, to restructure how and when yard and bulk requirements are determined, and when a TMU project is to be utilized. Plus, there was some general reorganization of the materials within the chapter. TMU was instituted two thousand and two and two thousand and three. There have been many code revisions since then, and some of those have not worked their way into the TMU, and this was an opportunity to do that. Almost two years ago, the staff met with some real estate professionals here in the city and developers. We were looking at a particular property and how that property might be used more efficiently than it had been. And they had suggested that there might be other ways of developing properties, and would the staff be willing to look at some other opportunities for developing underutilized properties? And we kind of, we have come up with our own characterization of what an underutilized property is. And that's basically a property where the original use of an existing building or property may no longer be relevant to the neighborhood in which it's located. Vacant or not, these properties may no longer function as they once did, under the constraints of the zone district, underlying zoning. And they can also, and because sometimes they do remain vacant for long periods of time, they will have negative real estate trends, causing falling real estate values in the neighborhood in which they're located. So we were tasked with formulating another way of reasonable and thoughtful redevelopment of these properties. And when we started out, we actually wrote another portion of code that didn't have anything to do with the TMU, and we found a planning commission, bless their hearts, went through this step by step, and decided that that was not the right way to go. We scrapped that, and then we started to take a look at the TMU and decided that it was very possible that that will work for these properties. I'm going to go through just basically the major revisions and touch on a couple of the minor ones. The major revision was to enhance the purpose of the TMU. Although, right now, there are very specific areas that are zoned with the TMU overlay. And you all probably know where most of them are, all along Highway fifty out to the east, several places along that route, along East Main, along South Ninth, and there are some also in the northern part of the Central Business District. These are all generally contiguous properties. It's a, it's an area of zoning. Back in two thousand and four, the very first property to be zoned as a standalone TMU was the Saint Scholastica property. And so what we thought was, it could very well apply to diverse areas of the city where a standalone property could be zoned with a TMU overlay, and then go through a TMU project to redevelop it. And that's what we have proposed here. So the purpose is, I'll go through those very quickly, there are four additional ones, to encourage redevelopment of properties in diverse areas of the city. And then redevelopment may include mixed uses, as long as the project respects the residential nature of the neighborhood, if that TMU overlay happens to be put on a residential piece of property. And then we are also suggesting that we are encouraging creativity in property design and landscape. We are also suggesting that the yard and bulk requirements, which is lot coverage, setbacks, generally building height, lot width, that those items, those parameters be set as we're going through the TMU project, rather than establishing something ahead of time, which is what the TMU did with certain things, which was lot coverage, generally. We're suggesting that that all be set in this very site-specific project when it gets approved, and as it's being approved. So that's a little bit of a change, because lot coverages were actually spelled out, and we're suggesting that not happen. I will say that this is, without those parameters, this is really something more akin to performance zoning, and that there are a lot of, I see a smile, there are a lot of, it doesn't set specific setbacks, for instance, but there is a very high degree of oversight by the planning commission in site design. And those things, some of those things are now mandatory versus discretionary. This also establishes when to submit a TMU project. We hope that it is much easier to understand when one would submit for a TMU project than it has been in the original TMU. And that basically is, when a use is requested that is not allowed in the underlying zone district, or a suggested use will create a mixed-use development, you will bring in a TMU project. Performance guidelines are no longer discretionary, they are mandatory. And like I said, there is a lot of oversight on the criteria portion of this by the planning commission. It also helps staff establish a review process with an applicant, so that the applicant is aware of what those performance standards are. Those are the main sections that have, that are, what staff would consider to be the major revisions. We have changed somewhat the appeals process, the revocation and modification process, as you can see in your staff report. And then we have also added, probably one of the more important parts of this, too, is there has, there was never an opportunity to amend a TMU project. One had to basically start over, come in with a new project. We have put in an amendment process as well. There are some minor revisions. We've moved definitions around. We have, we've actually moved them into the main section of chapter seventeen of the zoning code. We have updated prohibited uses based on some changes to the industrial zone district that we did back in two thousand and fourteen. We have just moved some other things around so that they see, they make more sense in the construction of this chapter. I think that is about all I'm going to go through with you. There are the excerpt from the minutes of the meeting from the planning commission, their decision, and then also you'll find ordinance number ten, which is the suggested approval of this repeal and reenactment of the chapter. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I can.
Yes, Mr. Weed?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, a couple of questions. Terry, so the TMU is approved solely by the planning commission?
That is true.
And...
Yes.
Is that's currently the way we...
It's the only thing that they...
That's the way we do it right now, too, isn't it?
Yes. Yes, that has not changed.
Okay. And you were about to say, the only thing...
That is really the only application that they approve is the TMU project.
Yeah, and...
Could I chime in on the response to that?
Yeah.
Under the current procedural rules, city council, a member of city council, including the mayor, could, could basically cause the appeal to happen. That's been removed, so now an appeal can be made by the applicant if, if the applicant is unsatisfied by what the planning commission has done, or by any, any party entitled to written notice. That's, that's properties within three hundred feet of the, the project. So the, the council referral is, is out, and, but if there is an appeal, then it would be heard by city council, and that would be the final decision.
And what was the rationale for removing the mayoral or council request for an appeal?
The recommendation was to make this more like other appeals to, that are internal within the structure of the city. This was the only thing that ever gave two city council members an appeal right.
Okay.
My concern with that, as, as I was looking at it from a staff perspective, was that there, there did not seem to be a basis for a mayoral appeal, whereas if we left that to the applicant and/or an interested party, they would be able to make those...
Okay, the interested parties being limited to those who were, I think it said...
Entitled to written notice, and those within three hundred feet of the exterior boundaries of the project.
And then you'll appreciate this probably more than anybody else here, but does this create at least the appearance of what some people were fond of referring to as spot zoning?
Perhaps it could create that appearance, in that, that the transitional zone district could proceed over other zoning and, and target an individual property that appears eligible for that treatment. And as long as the criteria is satisfied, that could happen. So the, the end result may look a little bit like a, a spot zoning, but it's, it's a, a rezoning, or a partial rezoning, an overlay creation that, in fact, would be authorized by the code for, for specific reasons. And the primary reason is, we do have a number of structures within the boundaries of the city that, that are no longer used for their intended purpose, and, and not easily usable within the zone district that they happen to be in. Many of those are churches. One of them is the South Canyon Hall, a, a structure you're familiar with.
Yes. It's a, it's a, well, I don't disagree with any of that, and I've never been a real big supporter of the whole concept of spot zoning.
By the way, just for the record, not all spot zoning is illegal, but, but a lot of spot zoning is, but it's, it's not personally illegal.
Another, does, I got the impression that this mostly applies to transitional zoning over residential, but does it allow other possibilities like commercial, transitional over industrial, for instance?
It can. It can, yes. It depends, now, it, this still applies to all of the TMU zoning that we have in place right now, doesn't change anything about that, and there are, there is, there are underlying zones in that overlay of commercial, industrial, and residential, and it could apply in the case of this new purpose as well.
Um, and then, a couple of specific questions. On the second page of the, no, it would be the third page of the Bill for Ordinance, Section 17, 14.030, I'm a little confused, it says to submit a TMU request for any new multifamily residential development. I'm a little confused by that because residential multifamily dwelling units are currently allowed in some zone districts.
They are indeed. If there is a TMU, if this, if, if there's a TMU overlay on any property where a multifamily residential use might be requested, it would have to go through this process. Regardless, well, if it was R3 and TMU, then it, I guess it would, it would have to go through the TMU process.
Yeah, I, I think?
And that's not a carry, that, this isn't a new situation, this was in the original.
One, one of the goals, for example, is in areas where we have some, and we have a few dilapidated, declining, single-family residences that are not being used, not being occupied, that are eyesores and blights on the community, it, it would be possible under the TMU framework to, to knock down what's there and come back in and perhaps put a duplex on the same lot where otherwise you couldn't do it under the, the R1 zoning. So that's, that's one of the goals with that.
Okay, all my concern is that this doesn't create some new encumbrance, let's say in an R3 zone where multifamily dwellings are already allowed.
If they're already allowed, they're allowed.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's something to remember, and this is also has, was established in the TMU to begin with, that anything that's allowed in the underlying zone district may continue to be allowed.
Yeah, that's a, a little bit of historical background. TMUs primarily exist because of me, and I applied for and got the first TMU use.
Back in his days, as an ordinary citizen.
As my days, yes. And then, let's see, one, the, I just had a question about the prohibited uses where the underlying zone is residential, and the, the one I specifically was gonna question was under 1714040, Number 5, A5, hotels and motels. And I don't know that I'd like to prohibit that specifically because I could see the potential for that along the north side of Highway 50, where you got the, a commercial zone along Fremont Drive, and immediately behind that is residential property. And I could see the potential for a hotel project in that area, and I wouldn't want it to be prohibited. And this has to go before review anyhow, so it's not like this would create a right to do something.
That's true.
Okay.
I, um, I guess I'm not. I guess that's gonna be up to you, all of you, to make a change there.
Well, what was the Planning Commission's motivation to prohibit the hotels?
Well, this is a carryover from the original TMU, that has not changed. Probably, and I can only surmise from Mr. Havens and the, Mr. Weed, you might even be able to fill in on that, I, my inclination is to say because of the impacts possibly to other residential properties. Because more than likely, if you've got the TMU and it's on top of a, a residential district, more than likely you've got surrounding residential properties, and perhaps because of the, the impacts of a hotel or a motel.
That's, that's my recollection, going back to when we first adopted this, primarily parking and traffic and lighting, and, and there was enough in, 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 in the group of assumed impacts that, that the group back then elected to make it a prohibited use.
Dennis, where exactly, again, are you thinking a hotel might wanna?
I'm sorry, what?
Where are you thinking a hotel might wanna go?
Um, you know, anywhere on the north side of Fremont Drive, you know, there's a highway, Fremont Drive, there's a commercial strip that's got a few motels in it right now, and then immediately adjacent to that, so it might be a block off of?
One block north.
One block north.
Which is currently?
Or a half, a half a block, really, north of Fremont Drive.
There aren't, that's mostly residential as it stands right now?
Yeah. That's a, and my point, I mean, this obviously would be subject to Planning Commission review and neighboring property owners' input, so, I mean, if there was a huge objection to it, I think it would certainly be voiced.
And changing it for just that area, would we then be possibly impacting other areas such as Greenwood and Macon as well?
Yes.
Which, which I would never wanna see a hotel or any, I mean, in that area.
Oh yeah, well, I mean, if you think about it, that part of Canyon City is pretty much the only place where hotels are likely to be built, is along Fremont Drive, because it's the only part that's accessible from the highway. Well, and, and then if you go further east, out in the area of the Hampton and whatever, the Canyon Inn or whatever it's called these days.
I don't believe there's any homes or anything behind the Hampton, right, in that area, right?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Is it possible to potentially amend that? That would stipulate if, it would be allowed if that residential area was adjacent to commercial?
I don't even think that's necessary, though, because?
But to protect, to protect a true residential area?
That, if, if it's a case of a true residential area, the neighbors will raise holy hell.
Oh, you're saying leave it?
It, it's not gonna happen. If, if somebody decided to build a hotel in Dawson Ranch, for instance, I don't know, maybe somebody would build a hotel in Dawson Ranch, so, but?
Is there an overlay to show where this, are you proposing an area, just like the TMU on East Main Street, where you're going to have a map that shows us where that's gonna overlay or this, and as they're gonna ask to do this?
They will ask, and they will have to go through a rezoning process first, which I did not explain, but that's how, that would happen. They would do the rezoning to the TMU, and then they would do an actual TMU project.
So, what these are, and I was on Planning Commission, we talked about TMUs, was to allow for some enduring quality of the ordinance, and there's nothing to say, right now, when you're talking about the property behind, let's pick on with the old, the hotel is there, I don't know what it's called now, but it was Best Western at one time, okay? Behind there is a clinic and a clinic, and then there's a daycare center on the corner, so it's trending in a certain fashion, but there is residential mixed in there. So this will allow for that opportunity to occur. Conversely, it could be where you have a commercial property that really doesn't look like it's going to go that way, but be more into a multifamily project, so that would allow for that as well. So you can go both ways on it. That would be for them to commit, am I correct in that assumption, that they could do that? We talk about protecting or creating commercial property, go the other way, too.
It can.
We go into a high-density residential in some fashion because that's the way it trended in that property, and, and on and so forth, is not being gonna be used, and probably isn't gonna be used for commercial or industrial property. So it could go both ways, but if the owners come in and ask for it, that could be, that could be considered and possibly granted. So, does that make it clear as mud?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
This is, the other thing that does come up that you had said, and I, in the ordinance itself, it does call for a hearing to the, at the City Council level, because I strongly think that all things should come to the final decision at the City Council if they feel they need to appeal that decision.
Well, it, it's, the TMU has to be, go through the rezoning process, which is always a City Council motion, and, I mean, we could kill it right there if we wanted to.
Well, then, the, in, in the zone, the resolution, as I see it here, it asks, it talks about that, it has a setting a public hearing before the City Council.
Right.
So, it would go?
Go ahead.
It would go for approval to the, to the Planning Commission, they approve it, and it still comes to City Council for final approval.
Okay, it, the, the rezoning to the TMU to put the overlay on top of the underlying zoning would be a regular rezoning, that would go before Planning Commission and City Council for approval. The site-specific plan that identified the uses and how that site was going to be used very specifically would go to the Planning Commission only unless an appeal is made, and then the appeal would be made to you, to the council.
So you're not gonna preclude to where it stops at Planning Commission, it goes on in case they think that they should have another hearing.
If it's appealed.
Appealed, that?
The, the, Planning Commission, it was intended that Planning Commission make the final decision on a TMU project.
Yes. But if they're not happy with that decision, they could appeal it to City Council.
Yes, yes.
That's never gonna go away. Okay? I think at one time, the impression I got from that, our discussion was that that, that you're done, go away, we'll never see you again, and that's just not the case. And that's what it's worded in like here, that I see. Okay? Any more questions, discussions?
When we come to vote on this, or before we make the motion, I'm going to request we strike Item 5, just heads up.
In 414040A, correct?
Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna request to strike in Section 1714040A5.
Everybody realizes the, these prohibitions only apply if part of the underlying district, district is residential.
Yes, I do.
Well, I do have a question. Is there, if you did, if you struck that out, does that mean, like I said, you asked, several neighborhoods could be subject to that possibility of having a hotel in a residential neighborhood, right? Or is it the way it is now, could special exceptions be made on a case-by-case basis?
No.
No, no, this is a blanket, a blanket.
If, if this stays in here, then it would not be possible anywhere in the city to have a TMU for, over a residential zone.
So if you want it to be a possibility on a case-by-case basis, then, then that, that should be left to the zoning part, the zoning piece of the, the TMU. And at that point, City Council could, could make a decision if, if it were known that a, a hotel or motel was being proposed. It may or may not be, generally would be, but wouldn't have to be.
Yeah, and, and just to be clear, every other list, item listed in here, or use listed in here, I completely agree with them, that they're, although we do have animal kennels in a residential area, so, already, but, yeah.
Just to make it clear, everybody understand, we're talking about initially zoned residential area that would have, and I think I'm correct in this, that would, someone would come in to ask for a TMU to put over, which then would allow for certain prohibitions, which are right here. You're eliminating that and making it possible that they could come in and ask for a TMU for a hotel or motel?
Yes.
On a residential, current residential area?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So I understand that. Okay.
I'm just curious, is, is MH1 and MH2 considered residential?
No, it's, I mean, it's a form of residential, but it's its own zone district for, for?
Okay.
Yes, it's totally different. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna need you to clarify that then, maybe, look, City Planner, are we talking about any residential area or just the transitional areas, which I thought were defined as like, again, this area between Main Street and Macon and Greenwood?
No.
Any.
Not the way this reads.
It's, the, the, the TMU, this doesn't apply to any specific residential area. Someone would have to come in and request a zone change to overlay a TMU on a specific piece of residential property, get that approved by City Council, then go to Planning Commission and present their plan for a hotel or motel on that piece of property, and get it approved by Planning Commission, subject to a public hearing.
And that also applies, it also applies to all of the properties in the city that are now zoned with a TMU overlay.
And any that might be added?
And any that might be added after the fact.
Thank you. You know, we, we've had the TMU zone for a long time, and it seems it was done so that people would take a look at properties that are probably not gonna be utilized for the purpose that it was initially intended, and try and make it a little bit easier, to create people to think about this. Because if you look at, from my position or my job, if I look at it, it's residential, I'm not even thinking about anything else, but if you say there's a possibility there's a TMU, then I have another regulation I can look at. Now I might be a little more creative in what I might be able to do that. Subject to Planning Commission's set, are you crazy? Or yes, it would work? Clear yet? Okay. Any more questions or comments from the Council? Is there any comments from the public, from our audience? Any further questions and discussion of Council? I'm gonna go, go ahead and close a public hearing at this time, and? I would need three to introduce, Mr. Meisner, Ms. Smith, and Mr. Weed. Oh, wait a minute, I'm on the ordinance. This is for Ordinance Number 10, Series of 2016, First Reading, would you read my title, please?
This is the Bill for Ordinance Number 10, Series of 2016, and Ordinance Amending Title 17 of the Canyon City Municipal Code to repeal and reenact Chapter 17.14, Transitional Mixed-Use Overlay.
Motion second from Council.
Nope, my one, before we make a motion on the ordinance, I would like to make a motion to amend the ordinance.
Hey, we have a motion.
Okay, so, I would like to make the motion to amend Ordinance Number 10, Series of 2010, striking Paragraph 1714040A5 Hotels and Motels.
Motion has been made to amend as stated. We need a second, is there a second? So I would need a second, motion's been made, so I would need a second from somebody.
Second.
Mr., Ms. Chomber, second, would you call or roll, please?
House Member Weed?
Do you wanna have discussion, or we had some?
We had, do you want any more discussion?
Again, and I just, so if I have a lot, there's a vacant lot next door to me in Dawson Ranch, 20 years from now, someone could, if they had a crazy idea to build a hotel there, could do so.
Not without a lot of hoops.
Not without a lot of hoops, however, I buy the lot now, and 20 years from now, something changes in the way people think, and I'm in, like, I'm not gonna go that far, but just basically say, I'm a grumpy old man, and I want, I still want it to be a residential lot. That's, we're opening that door. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion?
I will, I will just reiterate, there is an enormous amount of hoops that someone would have to go through, or a builder would have to go through to make this happen, but I personally would not want to preclude the possibility.
Okay, I'm gonna call the roll on the?
He's got something to say.
We're voting, we're voting on the, on the amendment, okay.
To take out the hotel motel?
Okay.
Number five. Number five. That's what we're voting on right now, we're gonna start that now. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Extrum.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Nigh by majority vote.
Okay. Let's go back to the original motion. I need, the original ordinance has stated with five in there. So I will need a, I need a motion from council and a second. Mr. Weed.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, I make motion to approve ordinance number ten, series of two thousand and sixteen on first reading.
Second.
Second? Would you call or roll, please?
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Extrum.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you all. I'd like to order to open another public hearing regarding the zone code amendment for the comprehensive sign plan. Public hearing is now open, could we have a report from the city planner?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is a zone, another zone code amendment to add a new section to the sign code seventeen point thirty point oh seventy-five, a comprehensive sign plan. A notice was published, um, as required by law. Also, at the May seventeenth hearing of the planning commission, um, they reviewed the comprehensive sign plan. Um, they had also seen this at a previous work session and requested that the proposed amendment come forward to them, and likewise to you. There were no comments from the public, no discussion, um, and they made a, a motion to approve in a unanimous vote. Mr. Havens at that, uh, planning commission hearing, um, as you can see in the staff report, suggested a small revision, and that has been made, and I'll go through that in just a, in just a minute. We have been approached as, um, on two specific occasions where, and I'll give you the specifics. One was for the Rocky Mountain Eye Clinic that was just recently built. Turns out their signage is off-premise, part of their signage is off-premise, their monument sign. And also, at the shops at Four Mile that used to be Creekside, um, those developers came to us and talked about further subdividing those already existing two parcels, one very large parcel and one small parcel. And as it turns out, some of that subdivision on, at the, at Creekside, could very well have put their signage onto another lot, onto the third lot, the new lot, making all of the rest of it, except for whatever might have been on that lot, the new lot, would have been off-premise. Whether that would have met the off-premise sign code or not, we, we did not know at the time. But there are certain requirements for off-premise signage, you can't have a sign greater than thirty-two square feet, and it can't be greater than eight feet in height. We did not want to wait until such time as they wanted to put their sign in and not have an opportunity to allow them to have some sort of a comprehensive sign plan, where they could get together as business owners or multi-parcel owners and develop a sign code that would work for them and not have those off-premise sign constraints. So that's why we brought forward this comprehensive sign plan. This was started with the previous city administrator who tasked us with, uh, taking that forward. Um, and so that's what this does. Again, it is a performance plan in that it doesn't establish specific height or bulk requirements, but requests in the application that, um, let me get to this real quick, that the signage that is proposed provides the minimum total signage that would be necessary to accommodate the needs of the development. It would eliminate certain number, height, and/or bulk of signage that would otherwise be allowed in the underlying sign code. It would eliminate any non-conforming, or some non-conforming signage or sign structures if they are existing on one or more of the sites. It would provide signage that would be uniform in terms of quality and character for the development. It would not substantially alter the basic character of the zone district, and it would comply with all other zoning requirements in title seventeen. This does not preclude people from, or businesses from using the underlying sign code. You don't have to have a comprehensive sign code if you don't want to use it. It's just another regulatory tool that we wanted to add to help business owners and developers as they proceed with new development.
When, when, when you say comprehensive sign code, you really mean plan?
I do. I apologize. Comprehensive sign plan. It would be a sub, um, portion of the sign code. So, I, this is rather brief, but I, and I can answer questions for you if you have any.
Are there any questions from council at this time?
I was curious, what was the problem with the sign at the Eye Clinic? Is it, is there a problem?
Well, there, when they came to us, they had just constructed the building, and we knew that they wanted to share signage with the surgery center. And not knowing what they were going to be coming up with, I had no idea as to how large a sign they were going to be requiring. We told them what the off-premise sign requirements were, and that if they were gonna need something greater than what was allowed, we didn't have a mechanism for them to do that. As it turns out, they were able to fit into our underlying's code requirements. So that didn't, that didn't happen. But the sign, the actual monument sign is on the Arkansas Valley Surgery Center property, and not on, but you wouldn't know that just by looking at the property, so.
Weed.
Surprise, huh? Um, uh, so, does this revision allow flexibility in the area of signage? Like, right now, a, a sign is limited to one hundred square feet, so there's flexibility in that?
There could be.
Okay, and, um, I mean, I will comment, 'cause I, I was around, I don't know if I was part of it or not, but this is long overdue, particularly with respect to the Four Mile, whatever plaza thing where the theater is. Um, a long time ago, they wanted to be able to put a sign up where the sign is that had, that they could show what movies are showing. Right now, if you wanna know what movies are showing, you gotta either almost get in a traffic accident, pay, trying to read the little tiny stuff over there, or actually pull over and look. Um, so, this is long overdue. Um, the, the only other question, again, this is maybe a wording thing, but, uh, it's on the second page of the ordinance, under item D, number one. I think it's extremely subjective, uh, so I, I would eliminate the word minimum from, provides the minimum total signage necessary, and just have it say, provides the total signage necessary to accommodate the needs of the development. And then, uh, my final comment is that this approval is granted solely, if I read this right, by the zoning administrator. And I'm not sure who our zoning administrator is, that's, if that's.
Let me clear that up right now, it's the city administrator, unless the city administrator designates somebody else to, uh.
Okay.
Fill the.
And currently, we have no one else designated.
Currently, the, the city administrator is the zoning administrator.
Okay, um... Uh, I don't know if I'm real comfortable with that.
As I under, as I took that, when I read it, in, first of all, I, I understand what I just done, it is right, it's overdue. Because if you had a shopping center or something like that on three different lots, technically, they would have three different signs. This way, one sign. What they're talking about here is, if a person comes in with a huge sign that may not take care of the minimum standard requirements for that site, and we would then have cause to ask them to make it smaller. That's the way I understood that. You're perplexed, that's the way.
No, that.
That's the way I understood it. So that's why, that's why minimum probably ought to, if you think about that negative positive thing, uh, ought to stay in there. If they came in with a huge sign, we could say, you know, that's a huge sign, but it doesn't have to be that big. You can take care of the minimum, the requirements could be minimized and still take care of the same thing. That's the way I took that.
Well, yeah, but I mean, you could say, okay, well, you gotta use smaller letters, or you gotta pack things in tighter, or you gotta make it an unreadable sign. It's, um, I mean, trust me, I know a little bit about making signs, and, um, you want it to provide the total signage necessary.
Right, but it, but it's disregarding of, of printing and everything else, it's these, the sign available. And as I took it, was that they could come in with a huge sign, and the discussion then would have to be around, you know, you don't need something that big, you need something a little more minimal than that.
Thing, it gives you a benchmark on where you can do some negotiations on this.
I think it opens the door for that discussion, yes. And that doesn't mean, it doesn't mean a bad thing, but we have to think about the possibility of someone that may want to have a huge sign. And the discussion could be around, you know, that's just, minimally, you don't need that big of a sign to get people's attention.
Well, this is up to, this is at the zoning administrator's discretion exclusively, so he can decide if it's too big or not too big. It's, uh, I, I mean, and there's nothing here that, I mean, there's nothing at all in here that says that you could, that you couldn't come in and ask for a really big sign and justify it.
And if you took minimum out, would do the, just the same thing? Minimum.
Well, no, this requires the minimum necessary, the minimum. So, it's, uh, what if there's expansion of the project that's on that property, or it's, it's, you know, might it be a minimum for what's in there right now? What if there's five empty buildings in there and they wanna add some more, I, I mean, I don't wanna be argumentative, but I do.
I think we're gonna, we're gonna end up at the same point.
Are we talking about semantics when it comes to the word minimum?
Yeah.
Are you basic, and what I'm hearing is that we're looking at minimum basi, basically as the smallest sign.
Possible.
Is that what we're talking about here?
Oh, it could.
Yes.
It could be, but I, that truly was not the intention in the writing of this.
Correct, but that's what the, the discussion's about.
Sure.
I think you can take it out, you'll still have that discussion, trust me. You will still have that discussion, whether the words there or not.
Oh, I agree, I, I mean, there will be discussion with the zoning administrator on what is the amount of signage that's needed, but I don't want, I, I just, I, I think it's crazy to put the word minimum in there.
Okay.
About the word range. Range of size that you would prefer to work in.
We're, we're, we're beating this to death, let's move on. Any other questions or comments of the, of council?
I just had one comment that in the downtown strategic plan, it talked about how Highway fifty corridor is really cluttered with signs, and it's a real distraction to, uh, drivers and people coming by, and it seems like this is a positive move forward to maybe decluttering Highway fifty and cleaning things up a bit. And maybe, potentially, there might be some more opportunities to declutter Highway fifty a little more.
Uh, I would say that as the Highway fifty plan becomes, is implemented, and, um, perhaps zoning and signs change, or our sign code changes along with the different zones that might be in the Highway fifty corridor, I think this could be very, very useful.
Yeah, and I think it would be helpful if a certain segment of the Highway fifty corridor would have a monument-style sign that showed all the conveniences that are available on Fremont Drive. That's the kind of look that we would be after. And so, whether minimum's in there or maximum, I, I think you could be comfortable with it, you're gonna have that discussion either way. Okay? Are there any comments from audience or questions? If not, I will entertain motions or motions from, I close the public hearing. And have, uh, we need three to introduce, Mr. Weed, Ms. Schumacher, Mr. Extrum. Would you please read by title?
You're gonna lose my voice. This is a bill for ordinance number eleven, series of two thousand and sixteen, and ordinance amending title seventeen of the Canyon City Municipal Code to add subsection seventeen point three zero point oh seven five, comprehensive sign plan.
A motion from council.
Hold on.
Mr. Weed.
I'll make a motion to amend the ordinance in section seventeen point three zero point zero seven five, paragraph D, sentence one, item one, to remove the word minimum.
Motion has been made by Mr. Weed for removal. Is that a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Meisner? Does everybody understand the motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Extrum.
Aye.
Approved by majority vote.
Thank you.
Okay, and one last comment.
We need to approve it as amended.
Yeah. One last comment, um, no reflection on Tony or any successor he may have. Is everybody comfortable with leaving the decision on these signs strictly up to the zoning administrator?
What would be the alternative?
Pardon?
What would be the alternative?
Um, I, I, I like this because it simplifies a process that it could otherwise be complicated. Uh, uh, the alternative could, the, the more complicated alternative could be, uh, have it approved by the planning commission, or a less complicated potential process would be to include some sort of appeal, if there was some major objection to this monstrous sign that went up.
Let me say this, decisions of the zoning administrator are in fact appealable to the vote of adjustment.
I'd give those guys something to do.
You were there once?
I was there once, yes.
And that way, it, it expedites the request, too.
Right.
Mr. Mayor.
Meisner.
In my opinion, that's what we're paying Mr. our work for, is to make decisions that council doesn't need to be involved in.
Well, it would always be able to go to the court, the, uh, board of appeals, anyway. Adjustment, rather.
Curb, and no one individual's infallible, and, uh, a community's character is hard to judge when you're new. I would, no issues, I would recommend any appeal go directly to this body. You're the elected representatives of this community, you're in the best position to make that call.
If you wanted to do that, then you'd have to add some language to, to the ordinance. And I would suggest if that's, if that's a concept you all believe in, table this tonight, and let's bring it back with the appeal language in it.
I would love, for sake of clarity, to have individual discussions with you about the whole philosophy of signage. I mean, there's two schools of thought, is it a form of identification, or is it intended to be a form of advertising? And coupled with that is a new millennial generation that doesn't pay any attention to signage, it's all driven by social media. They'll go to Yelp to find out where they wanna go, they're not paying attention to traditional signage. I mean, if you ask my kids, they're looking at a phone and saying, I'm going right there. So, the world has changed, and I would very much like to talk to individually members of the council to find out what your overall philosophy is, so I can best represent that in the decision-making process.
I would concur with what Tony's saying, and then this might allow us an opportunity to look at. to look at the semantics that we were discussing earlier. So I'd make a motion that we table this.
Second. We have a motion to amend this ordinance. Do you want to vote it and then vote it down? Or what do you wanna do?
I think we approved table would take precedence, wouldn't it?
You approved it to be amended, but you have not approved the ordinance as amended.
We haven't gotten there yet, so we need to...
And then reject it and send it back, or what?
You wouldn't wanna do that. I mean, we've amended the ordinance. Now we can just table it.
So we can go ahead and do an amendment to table the issue?
I think that's correct.
I hadn't been adopted, the ordinance, but I...
Then it just said it in limbo.
The amendment's been made, but if you table it, then it could... It will come back in a different form.
The whole thing comes back, yeah. The whole thing comes back, and we have to revote on it, anyway.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Meisner.
Does that table in this create any complications from your end?
No, sir.
Yeah, well, my... That's a kind of the question. Is this immediately impacting somebody who would like... I mean, specifically, the Four Mile thing was referenced in here.
Not presently.
Okay, so we're not...
We don't have... I am not aware of anything that's coming forward that would use this right now.
'Cause I would maybe have a different opinion if I thought we were holding something up.
Then we have a motion from Mr. Meisner to table it. Do we...
I was just...
Okay, motion's been made to table this resolution at this time. Do I have a second? Ms. Schumacher, seconded.
Oh.
Would you call a roll, please? Wait.
Can we...
Want a table to it, definitely?
To the next meeting? Is that enough time for you, John?
I think so. Enough time for Tony.
I'll talk to you this week, and...
Yeah.
Are we talking two weeks from now, then, Dennis? Or do you wanna go a month from now?
Six twenty.
Six twenty. Okay?
We might have to go back to Planning Commission.
It won't?
No. No, we'll not. So would you call a roll, please?
Motion's been made to table this matter till the June 20th council meeting. Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Approved by majority... Unanimous vote, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Now, I just wanna address that fact that there were several things when I was on Planning Commission that were put in the hands of the city administrator. And it did not have appeal process to city council. And so if that's gonna be the wording, then I think we should direct that this Planning Commission not to include those wordings in there and all of them, if that's what your feelings are at this time. You're the council.
No, I'll say, as a rule, I think we should give great credibility to the recommendations of the Planning Commission. And I think it's appropriate, in the cases where we have done it, to give them final say on it, subject to appeal to either the Board of Adjustment or the courts.
Okay. I am just trying to avert the possibility that we'll get more that will state that this city administrator has final say, and you all want... Don't like the verbiage, and you want some verbiage put in there that says there is an appeal process if they get denied by the city administrator. That's what I'm hearing tonight.
There is an appeal process with respect to any decision made by the zoning administrator.
There is.